So you're ready?
Hi.
You don't have to start until 3:30, it's two minutes. Alright, I think we'll go ahead and get started. My name is Lynn Shaker. On behalf of the Urbana Lions Club, I'd like to welcome you to our school board candidate forum. We are going to use the same format that we've used for the city one that just concluded. Candidates will have equal time to answer each question. We've set that at two minutes. We ask that if the audience has any questions, they write it on a card and put it in the box. And if time allows, we will get to those. We did have a considerable number of questions submitted on the Gmail. So those are what we're going with first. So the very first question is introduce yourself, including your background and why you are running for the board. And we'll start on the side.
Hello, my name is Molly Stolti. I am running for the At-Large position on the school board. I am a graduate of CQ, and so is my husband. And we have three kids that are now attending CQ in three of the four buildings. And I'm running because it's important to invest in our community. And so the one way I'm able to give back right now is with my time. So I'd like to introduce myself.
Hi, I'm Kim Simon. I'm also running for the At-Large position on the school board. I am running for reelection just because I feel like we have some good moments moving forward. And I want to continue. We're in kind of a pivotal time right now with the district as we're looking to hire a new superintendent for moving forward with facilities updates. So I just want to continue with that progress as we move forward. My background, I, my husband and I have lived here for the last eighteen years. We have four kids. One is graduate, three are still in the district. We've gone from four schools to three schools till we're into this year finally. And we, I'm just really proud of the district. So I want to continue to serve and be a voice for the community.
My name is Christine O'Farrell. I am a current school board member, running for reelection for District One. My husband and I have lived here since 2010. We have three boys, all of which have now graduated, two of which are sticking around. I'm anticipating hopefully having grandchildren back in the district in the next ten years maybe. I want to stay involved with the school because we had some challenges in the past, but I know we have a lot of really good things coming up, lots of pivotal decisions that will impact the next five to ten years. I'm really excited about the capital project we have coming up and was very instrumental in working for getting everything bonded and working through all of that. So I'm just excited to get to make some of those, help make some of those decisions.
I'm Mark Jaden. I moved to Center Point in 1990 and I started teaching high school science, I taught ninth grade science, chemistry, advanced chemistry for thirty-three years. Throughout that time, I coached football, basketball, baseball, track, at a variety of different levels. Over that time, I also obtained my master's degree in curriculum and instruction. I've been retired now for two years. Since my retirement, I've been a part-time dump truck driver for one thing, but also I substitute teach and substitute bus driver within the district. My wife Brenda and I live just south of Urbana. And together, we have three children whom have all graduated from Center Point or Urbana. And right now, we have six grandchildren that are all in the district. They range from first grade up to twelfth grade. So all four buildings are represented by our grandchildren. Reason why I'm running is because I am so connected to the district, to the communities. I care deeply about the students. I care deeply about, you know, the communities themselves. And I do want to give back. I want to keep seeing the momentum that Kim talked about. I want to keep seeing that move forward and seeing this district thriving as it has in the past.
Yeah, second question, we'll start with Kim. What do you believe the role of the school board record gives?
I think the main role is we need to be a voice for the community. We represent the community, we represent students and staff, and we need to be a voice by early legislative. We need to look at policies. We need to develop policies and we need to make sure that they're being implemented. As school board members, we need to make sure that the district is being run in appropriate ways. We oversee the superintendent, that's the school board's employee, and we need to make sure that that superintendent is representing the school in a way that we want it to be represented. And then finally, just to make sure that our students are getting the best education they can, making sure that we're implementing programs and curriculum and offering programs that are progressing our students and giving them the best chance that they can, both as students in the district and once they're out of our district. And I really believe we play a big role in giving kids the opportunity to know what they're going to do next in life and guiding them that way.
When I was first elected to school board, I did not, you can't really prepare yourself for that role. So you don't know exactly, you think you would, you assume what your role will be, and then the reality of what that is is completely, at least for me, completely different than what it turned out to be. We are not to have our fingers in every little messy detail that goes on or every good detail. We are more of an oversight board than anything else when things come to the school boards, when things are supposed to come to the school board's attention. That's when sometimes not-so-easy decisions are to be made. So our job is to kind of keep a thumb on the legislatures that are passing through the state houses so that we can then implement different policies and things that need to be changed, things that we can keep updated so that we are in line with things that are happening on that level. We are a voice for the community and people should, I like to feel that we're present in the community and then when people do, when it's appropriate, when people think to our attention, that we can then steer them in the right direction and help them get the answers that they feel that they need. I like to think, and I can say total assurance with the board that we have now, that we all have the children's best interest at heart. And whenever I have a decision to make, that is what I go to first. How is this going to first impact the children in a positive way and then impact the district in that order in my book? Sometimes that's easier than others. But, but our major roles, we've taken several classes that teach us steering versus learning and arrowing, and it is our job to oversee the superintendent and make sure that he is staying in line with the policies that we have.
First off, I should have said for the first question, I am running for District One also of Urbana, District of our school district. I also believe the role, the number one role is to be a bridge between the community and the school district and especially with the superintendent. With my wife having served previously on the school board, I know first hand, yeah, you can't just do everything by yourself. And when somebody comes to you with concerns, it's your job to make your related concerns to the appropriate people. But in this case, most likely the superintendent is who you can refer that to, encourage people to go through the channels of command, the chain of command, and communicate with each other, try to get things settled at the lowest level possible before it gets, before it blows up and gets bigger than what it should be. So that's, that's the first primary role, I think, of school board member. Setting policy, making sure that the superintendent is guiding the school in the direction that the school board would like them to, and balancing the needs of the students with fiscal responsibility and making sure that the money is going, we're getting the biggest bang for our buck basically for the students.
Wow, how do we follow all that? Can I say the though? I would say along with that, all of the things really, if elected, our role is to have public trust in everything we do. And I think that starts with clear and open communication, being very transparent in every decision that is made, and being a listener. There's, you know, so many viewpoints, sides, and one thing we do, still thing language, build bridges between everyone, and that starts with being open and transparent.
Our next question, we'll start with Christine. What, what do you feel are the biggest challenges the district is currently facing?
Well, obviously, we have had more than I would like superintendent turnover lately. And this trickles down to every other aspect because, as Mark said, we are definitely the bridge between the public and sometimes the superintendent. But the superintendent is really the main one that keeps all his administrators in the loop. He is ultimately, he answers to us. Our only employee is the superintendent as the board. But the superintendent then has to trickle down to all of his administrators, and then they have to relate concerns to him. They have to, there's a definite order that things are supposed to be followed as far as concerns, which isn't always followed, but you do your best. So I think for us to get, I think for us to find a new superintendent that the public, that is transparent, that is doing everything, it's a very tricky role because not only do they have the responsibility of working with the business officer and making sure that we are spending those tax dollars appropriately, they also have to work with the curriculum with us, and then we are all working together to keep all that. He just has a huge job and it really can, it really can steer the district one way or another. And so his role is pivotal. He also is the first look that a lot of people get, and so to have two that we've gone through now in just under, well, so it's been like eight years, but that's still a pretty high turnover for only having Mr. Alvin for a short time. So my biggest concern right now, and we already have the steps in place, we have already hired a team that's going to help us steer us right and get some good candidates and picking a new superintendent. My next big concern is just getting all the construction projects over. And that's an exciting, stressful, but exciting time as well.
Time.
I kind of, this, this question two ways. The most pressing issue, I believe, is hiring a qualified superintendent. A superintendent who is a leader of leaders, who is going to be a person who's going to allow their building leaders to do what they have been trained to do and, and work with them and, and support them. So I think that's the most pressing issue that we have. I think the biggest challenge that our district faces is trying to meet the needs of the staff and students with a limited budget. We are a community, as a district, I should say, we, we are a tax core district, and there are a lot of things that we would love to do, but we just can't afford to do them. So we have to really prioritize what it is that's going to give us the most for what we want, give us the most for what we, with what we have. So I think that's going to be the biggest ongoing challenge. I'm super excited about having the bond referendum passed and all of it to look forward to with that. And just kind of keep things moving in that direction. But yeah, biggest challenge, I think, is going to be our money situation.
I would, we have, we have a lot going on right now in our community. Just a brief, well, the minutes, you guys, you guys work really hard, there is no doubt. We have a very important, have a hard right now. One of the things that I've been moving to, for me, the top priority is bringing on a superintendent. But with that, on the other side of that is retaining good quality staff. We have seen a lot of turnover. And so it's about bringing on and maintaining some stability within our community for both the residents, our staff, and our students, and making sure we're keeping our staff happy. You know, we, we, we're just supporting, not just the Irela crowd, but Storm and Pointer crowd. And we need to, we need to keep the regular ones here. We have a lot of competition out there, so focusing on how we keep that amazing staff here and how we recruit new ones.
I see our biggest challenge is our decrease in enrollment that we've been going through for the last several years. It's no secret that every year, we've been seeing a decline in enrollment. And it's not that we're seeing kids who are open and rolling out at a higher rate, that's not where it is. It's just there's fewer young kids in our district. So that's fewer kids coming into school. So as you all know, decrease in enrollment equals this money for the school district. So we need to find a way to deal with that decrease in enrollment while not overtaxing our citizens. I mean, we have a high, everybody in here knows that we are really high taxes. And to go with what Mark says, we are, our tax money comes from our residential payers. We don't have a whole lot of business between the Center Point and Urbana districts, so a lot of our taxes come from our property taxes. So I think we need to figure out a way to be financially responsible with our money, but at the same time, continuing to grow as a district. You know, we want good facilities, we want good educators, we want to figure out a way how to keep good staff here, but still managing our money well. And I think that's the biggest challenge that we have right now is balancing those two things.
Our next question, we'll, we'll start with Mark. How would you handle concerns about controversial or sensitive topics being taught in the classroom?
Well, first thing I think you need to look at is the law and make sure that we are following the law. We don't really have a whole lot of choice. Looking at how the laws apply. You know, every situation is going to be different, but to me, the number one thing is focusing on the student safely and respect. No matter what the situation is, we need to make sure that the student feels like they are accepted, whatever, whatever we're talking about, that they feel safe and that the rest of us, the rest of the student body also is educated in treating everyone with respect. I think that that's something that we're seeing all throughout society anymore, is a lack of respect for differing beliefs, differing values. And I think school has to be, number one, a safe place for everybody. So that would be kind of my primary focus is, is looking at, at how students are treated that way.
How would you handle concerns about controversial or sensitive topics being taught in the classroom?
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough one. And I would say it definitely comes down to policy. I think Mark and Brenda said, it does, every situation, situation might look a little bit different when it comes to this kind of question, and everyone has a handful of ideas in their head of what it can look like. So starting with what are our current policies in place? And leading with a student-first mindset in each of these situations, how are they being safe or respectful? And yeah, it's a very broad question, but I would say it has to start there.
I agree. The number one step is we need to make sure that we're following the law that's set by federal and state. Are we following our district policies? So we need to look and see, are we following what the district says we should be teaching? And then I think from there, you know, if, if students or parents have concerns about what's being taught, then I think, you know, it, it needs to be looked at. And I think we need to ask, why is that being taught? Whatever the topic is, is it pertinent to the subject matter at hand? Is it, is it serving a purpose in that specific classroom? You know, if you're teaching math and you're way off to one of those controversial topics, why is that in that classroom? And let's get focused on what we're supposed to be focused on in that classroom. So I hope that it can be a conversation. Honestly, it should not probably be with the school board right away. It should be whichever teacher that classroom is in, is, does that principal have to have a conversation with that teacher? And if it's not handled there, then to the superintendent, and then finally to the school board. But hopefully, it can start with a conversation of what's the purpose and how are you achieving your purpose by teaching math?
And I agree with everything that's been said so far. This is something that we have had to do repeatedly as a school board, unfortunately. I would like to say that we already have a no bullying, no bullying policy in place. I think that is very important, that it is enforced no matter the situation. I think that children need to be able to, in order to be properly educated, they need to know that they are safe. And I think that we have really good counselors right now who help with that. I want every child to know that there is a teacher there somewhere, and I know firsthand that we have a wonderful staff that does listen to our students. Because if, if they're not safe, then they're, they're clearly not open to learning if they're worried about something as basic as that. I also think that we need to hold teachers accountable, and if they have been found to be teaching things that they know according to policy is not allowed, that then there need to be repercussions for that. I don't think that that should just be swiped under the rug. I think that the motive should be looked at as to why, if you're teaching one subject and you branch off into something else that, that is directly against a school policy that we have, that that should be looked at as well. I would like to think, as a, as a mom who has had a child that was bullied, I understand this firsthand and how detrimental that can be when they don't even want to walk in a building. How can we expect them to want to learn? So I, I think that by working with the teachers and working with the counselors, I really do believe that the majority of teachers in Center Point and staff and administration really do have the best interests of the children at heart. Nobody could ever talk me out of that. So I would like to think that this doesn't happen in our district, but the reality is it happens everywhere. So I think not having our heads buried in the sand is the first step.
With this next question, we'll start with Molly. As a board member, how would you ensure that all CPE communities and buildings, including Urbana, feel equally supported and represented in district decisions and communication?
Could you read that?
Yep. As a board member, how would you ensure that all CPE communities and buildings, including Urbana, feel equally supported and represented in the district decisions and communication?
Great question. The first thing that came to my mind is what people ask me where I come from. I don't say one community or the other, I say CQ. We, we are united, we are a team. And I think we do a really great job of uplifting both of our communities. And I, I think as a board, we can continue to do that through, I mean, just even hosting events at both communities and meetings as well, and making sure everything we do is visible in both communities, making sure our communication is clear, not just in one way or the other. So I would continue to uplift both towns.
I think a great way to get input from both communities is we have work sessions over the last four years in which we invited city planners, mayors. Unfortunately, I don't think Urbana has sent anybody when we've done that. So I would really encourage representation, whether it's a council member or whatnot, to come to those meetings so we, we can work together, you know? How can we build up our, our relationship? Because I, I don't think you can have the school district separate from the communities. Everybody has to work together. We have to do what's best because really, we're all, it's all of our kids. So I think you have to work together. So whether that's planning or, you know, we, we had a meeting several years, a couple of years ago about the decline in enrollment, just talking about where, where are houses being built? How are we trying to bring more kids into the community? So I think it's important to have representation from both and working together. And the superintendent hopefully going out and talking to the mayors and the city planners and those different, different aspects. I also think, like Molly said, I think it's important that we host things over in Urbana too. I think we, the newer and bigger schools are over in Center Point, so things tend to happen over there. But I think that, you know, we have different events that happen in Urbana, but usually it's for the kids who are third through fifth grade, and that's what ends up over there. So I do think it's important that we use that school as well to host different things. We used to have school board meetings over there that got moved over to the high school, but I think there's different things that can happen in there just to get people in that building to see it, see what's happening in there.
This has been an ongoing problem since we've, since I have been on the board. And I think one of the main things that we, that wasn't being done at that time, that we have now involved a PR, for lack of a better word, group called the Donovan Group that has just been excellent in getting things out there, clear communication, transparency. Usually if there's something that has happened in either of the buildings, they are our go-to, they get a blast out on Facebook, they make social media announcements for us. They, they have been a wonderful resource for us. So I think the, the families that choose to be in the know, for lack of a better way to put that, and engage in that, there, there's a wonderful tool for them to use. The other thing that has been new in the past couple of years is to use our website. Our district website was not user-friendly at all three or four years ago. We have, well, not the board, but we, our administrators have worked tirelessly to keep that updated, to have that be a wonderful resource. Because while Center Point has a higher percentage of students, most of the growth, I don't remember the percentage, but most of the growth in the last five to eight years has come from Urbana. Most of the new structures have been from Urbana. And so I don't know how, with an uneven number of Center Points, percentage-wise, higher than Urbana, we could equal that out. But we, we welcome the input on that, and we want to continue to do everything that we can to make us, to stop the division. And to, like Molly said, we're just CQ. We don't have to be Center, Center Point or Urbana. We are one unit, so.
Having come to the district in 1990, that's right when Center Point and Urbana emerged and became Center Point, Urbana. So for me, as Molly had said, I don't think of it as Center Point and Urbana or, or Urbana. It's always just, I've always felt like there's one community separated by about five miles. It's just like one big town with a five-mile stretch where there's not quite as many houses. And that's just the way I've felt about that personally. Now, having said that, I know that Urbana had, when, before we merged, went through some major discussions about whether or not they were going to lose their school and in particular become part of Benton School District. And there were community members that had a fight to make sure that we're not going to lose the school. And that was one of the things that Mr. White had promised, we're keeping that building in Center, in Urbana. Because once you lose your building, the community loses their identity a lot. So it's important that we do try to have things over here, have some meetings, but also celebrate what's going on at this building. The teachers, the students, things that they're doing, you know, highlight them, talk about the website, put special things on. I mean, we do that with our district, but make sure we emphasize that, yeah, it's going on over to Urbana also. And let, let everybody feel like they're part of this district like everybody else.
This next question, we'll start with Kim. What ideas do you have for attracting and redeeming quality teachers and school staff in our district?
This is a conversation that we have every year when it comes to negotiations, and I really feel like we have worked hard for staff here to offer, offer packages or incentives to come to our district. You know, we, we, with snow days, we have implemented the last couple of years where teachers are able, if they're doing some work time during those snow days, that those can help, or they're contract hours, it's things like that, that we offer that little extra. We might not pay as much as the big five districts in the state. So I think we try to make it up in other little ways that I think, honestly, if, if
Honestly, if teachers are thinking of coming here and they can come in and interview with other staff members and see our community, I really feel like we have this close community group and staff group that are really, Mark, you can talk to this, that just really feel close. And Helene, I know that you had posted recently that you just feel like you have, those are your friends and your community there. So if we can get people in the district and just be around the other staff and feel that community that we have, that's going to attract. And then just continue to work on, what can we offer? You know, what can we offer besides just that nickel and dime? That's important, don't get me wrong. I think that's what people look at first. But I think we need to look at the other incentives to come into the district.
And I would agree with Kim, that is something that we discuss every single year. And we are somewhat limited with contract negotiations every year, just with caps. There are tons of little extras. And we don't have a huge. I mean, we've had some administrative turnovers this past couple of years. But as far as teacher retention, we have a lot of long-term teachers. We have a lot of long-term secretaries that have been in the building. So we do, for the most part, retain our teachers. And I think a lot of that has come, we've had a lot of long-term building principles, which I also think is the first, not defense, but one of the first things that we can do that creates the trust that they feel that they're working for somebody that listens to them, that can take any concerns that they have and help to work through them. We are working on new incentive things, though. With this last time that we did contracts, we're looking at doing early retirement packages that are going to be wonderful. And getting things leveled out as far as the new teachers coming in that are making a significant amount more than a teacher that has been there for 10 or 15 years. I mean, so somehow, we can't change those salaries because it's a new statewide standard. But we can give other perks where we can, while keeping in mind that we do have, as Mr. James said, we're a tax poor district. Like Kim said, we don't have a lot of industries to support us with our tax dollars. So we really do, and I feel our past business secretary was very good. I know that Callie, our current business secretary, is very good at looking for different ways that we can save those money, save those dollars, and use them to support our teachers as best we can.
Yeah, Christine, I believe you're right, that we have had a lot of, a lot of staff members that have been around for a long time. There are a lot of staff members that are right around my age that are starting to leave, starting to go into retirement. I have noticed, though, in the last probably 10 years, that we have not retained staff like we used to. And part of that, I believe, is, you mentioned a few things here that I think in particular we need to do. Early retirement packages, not every year, not offered every year, but definitely something that we need to look at. That is an incentive that a teacher's going to come and look at and say, hey, this is something that the district is going to offer at once in a while. I also think we ought to make those retroactive to two years ago. That would be nice. Don't see that. One of the things that we used to have also as part of our contract with Kim White, one of the things we used to have as part of our contract was that teachers, when they did retire, they were reimbursed $10 a day for every sick day that they did not use, up to the limit, which was 105 sick days. Now, that's not a lot, but that is something, that's a step in the right direction. That was taken away immediately after the collective bargaining was taken from teachers. So, you know, reintroducing that kind of thing. I think one of the things right now we have going for us is our facilities are going to be significantly upgraded in the next few years. And that is something teachers, prospective teachers and staff members will look at, too, and say, hey, that's good, and we always have great kids, so.
The question being, what new ideas, what ideas would I have that would maybe attract new staff or keep them on board? I'm a tree planter. I run a team of people who plant trees. So attractive ideas for retention, or would they be more excited to be at work? Or probably not, could be very similar to school staff. But I'd be happy to talk trees or have a proper plant tree all day. But something I can do, bring to the table, is bring my listening ear and ask teachers, what is it that you would like? What is appealing to you? What is a realistic idea that the board could talk about? I think that it's something I excel at. It's just kind of being quiet and listening and observing and hoping to be able to bring a voice that way. Definitely don't want to prescribe anything outside of that. Because I want to have the right knowledge for school to bring teachers into this school. I want to hear that from them.
So our next question, we'll start with Christine. What does transparency mean to you as a school board member?
That's a loaded question. You took a hint. So the reality of it is, we are not able by law to be transparent about a lot of things. Most people do not realize that in the community. We are, by law, if we are dealing with personnel issues, if we are dealing with confidentiality issues with any student, if we have confidentiality laws with any teacher, we cannot disclose that. We could get sued and look with the district. Most people do not realize that. Most people want us to just, they hear something on Facebook and they want it confirmed, or they want to know what's going on, or what happened in that meeting, or why are you in closed session? There are five reasons we can go into closed session. When we invoke one of those, we have to state what it is. And then we do a roll call vote so that everybody knows that we are all in alignment and agreement. Because we can be held and sued if we go into a closed session. So transparency in everything that we can do, which I don't know the percentage, but a great deal of what we do, we are able to share and it's done in an open board meeting. And anybody can come in, we welcome people to come in. I like it when people come and talk to us. Because if you give us an expectation and we are able to do it, we will absolutely do that for you. We can certainly, we are not allowed to speak back when you come and speak with us, which also, we've started to read that at the beginning of the board meetings now. So people understand why we don't give comments or things back. So we are allowed to be transparent about the things that we are. And the things that we're not transparent about, it's because we want to keep the district protected. That said, I'm for as much transparency as we are allowed to give. I think that if we have things, and that's why we hold our meetings that we open, that's why everything is listed online.
Yeah, I can understand what Christine is saying there, that there are definitely times when you cannot share what's going on in closed session meetings. Definitely getting the meeting agendas out, and we already do that. There's a way that we can do it so it's even easier for the public to find out when those meetings are going to be. Because right now, I know we have a more user-friendly website, does still take a few more clicks, I think if it's actually just published instead of having to go in and try to look for it. And same thing with the notes that are taken during those. We're better now, or the school board, I shouldn't say we are not part of it, but the school board does do a better job now than it was a couple of years ago. Because I went to school board meetings and the school board sat in a closed circle, and there was discussions going on that could not be heard unless you were sitting inside that circle. So now, everybody is facing out and there is more of that open dialogue and the public is able to see that. But I think trying to get things out there and being proactive. A few years ago, we had a board member that left the district and needed to be replaced. And there was a situation where I think, had the public been more, made more aware of what the guidelines were for replacing that person, there have been a lot more good feelings about how that happened. And so if we can be more proactive when it comes to things like that that might be controversial, that we can still share with the public, that's what I suggest.
Yeah, two group points already. I have pretty understanding of not being able to say everything. I worked for municipality for almost 10 years and understanding privacy, closed sessions, how that looks. And then I would agree with Mark, the most I got to come along with was maybe there's still a couple more clicks than to make it a little, make it more easier to move some of those and also get information out there a little bit quicker when the meetings are. If there's time to be, just be able to post that a little bit faster. And the first thing that came to my mind with this question is something I always think about is honesty. One of my fellow coworkers used to always say, honesty without tact is cruelty. It's always finding that balance of being honest and direct and knowing your audience and just keeping all that in the forefront of your mind.
As a school board member, transparency to me is communication. It all comes down to communication. And I think we have come a long way with this. I think, Christine mentioned the Donovan Group, we use them to put a lot of our Facebook content out. And I think that has been a huge step forward for our district. And I think we try to communicate things the best that we can as a district without giving illegal information, basically, that we can't. And unfortunately, what I tell people is, there's a big push a few years ago, three, four years ago, the district needs to communicate more, you're trying to hide things, we need to communicate more. So there was a push, and all of a sudden, now, people complain because they get a lot of emails from the district. Molly, I have three kids, I'm one of them, I get boo-boo from all of my kids, all of these emails. And people are complaining that we get too many emails from the school district. Let's face it, and the city of Urbana knows this right now. People love the dirty details, they want the gossip. And we're, nobody's trying to hide anything, but you can only give that information out that's important to them. He wants to come in here, actually, I can tell him. So, you know, I think giving as much communication out about information that we can't give out, and the stuff that we can't give out, to make sure that we, hey, we're working on this, we're doing the best we can, we know there's concerns about this, and we're trying to handle it in the clearest, optimal way that we can.
So this next question, we'll start with Mark. How do you balance funding between academics, extracurriculars, and facilities?
Yeah, well, the first thing that you have to look at is what has the biggest benefit for the students? What's going to be best for them? We're an academic institution, so we need to make sure we're focusing on things that are going to help kids learn better. But we also have to look at if it's going to be a limited amount of money that we have to spend. So find the priorities and making sure that kids come first. And that's, that's how I think, as much as I can focus on that or say about that.
Yeah, Mark, you hit the nail right on the head. It's all about focus on our uses, where's someone coming from, how do we spread out, and is everything we're doing our student-driven in the day? You know, this is definitely a topic I'm very interested in. I'm kind of a conservative one of the weirdos, I actually like three limits. So I've been going to be able to dive into the information that is out there that we can look at and have a better understanding of who's going to focus, with the funding that comes in and how it's spread out and what that looks like it comes from, that all the students from our school.
I think our first priority has to be the education of our students. So yes, we want the best sports facility or the nicest auditorium, but are we giving our kids the best education? Are they in a safe environment? So I think student safety, staff safety, that needs to be a huge priority. And I think you can see that by our priorities with the bond rubber and all that. Staff, or safety was number one, and I think it needs to continue to be number one, education. Do we have curriculums in place? Do we have, are we giving them the base? Because school, school is about education, number one. And then beyond that, I think we need to look at what gives our kids, again, if we're looking at extracurricular activities, we want safety to be an issue there, too. And again, I think you see that with our priorities of our bond dollars that we're spending, of our kids participating in extracurricular venues that are safe for everybody. But what's going to give our kids the most opportunity? How can we impact the greatest number of kids? How can we try to include everybody? A big push for the district has been to try to get that percentage of kids who are involved in extracurricular activities way up there. Because we find that the more involvement there is, the happier kids are. And it creates a big cul, a good culture. So where can we, where can we give kids the biggest opportunities? So I think that needs to be a priority.
The funding is always tricky. I could take a 10-year class on the funding and still, because we're a government entity, not even beginning to scratch the surface. There are basically five different buckets that have to pay different things. And the funding from those buckets comes through different state dollars, local dollars, federal dollars. And they're all allocated towards different things. So this question is really a non-issue, because for the most part, our business, our visits, our biggest expense in the district is teacher salaries, which I think is appropriate, because if we have good teachers, then our students are getting educated. So I think that one kind of takes care of itself. I think that we do a pretty good job with fundraising. I know we have a lot of clubs at our school that are both student and teacher-supported. Those cost us very little money. I think that, like Kim said, I want to say, last year, we had 98% of students involved in at least one extracurricular activity. And that just leads to overall student involvement, overall student happiness. If they feel that someone at school will miss them if they don't show up to this club or that club, it makes them feel heard and seen. So I think that that's, and those are free, for the most part. And we have a wonderful staff that keeps the kids involved in that kind of thing, through the gardening clubs, through all of the different clubs that we offer. I think our teachers do a great job of that.
This next question, we'll start with Molly. What additional resources do you feel are needed for students to be successful at school?
That's a tough one. Additional resources needed. At this time, I think our school does a really great job at providing resources our students need. And I can look like many things, whether it's books, whether it's technology, and even, you know, just for them, speaking as a student, a class student, and having kids in school, the teachers got a way to de-reserve themselves outside of the classroom. So I think we are doing a great job at providing a lot of resources right now. I'm sure there are other opportunities, which probably lead back to that timing question that we just had. But I do think we are doing a phenomenal job of what we have right now.
I think additional resources that we need for students to be successful is giving students a voice. So giving them an opportunity, everybody, to be a leader, to be heard, to participate. So if that means it's an extracurricular, or if that's a club, I think we need to find, what else can we offer these kids that they can be a part of, that their voice is being heard? Because if they feel like their voice is being heard and they're important, then, you know, when they go out to their job, they're going to be a leader when they go to their job. They're going to want to participate, and they're going to want to be on teams, and they're going to want to lead groups. And I think that's what we need to develop is leaders. And the more we can get people involved and get kids to know that their voice is important and that they play an important role in what they're doing, we are going to develop a whole lot of amazing leaders in the future.
To me, this really isn't a funding question. I think that for the most part, our children are served with resources fairly well. I think that perhaps, this is completely off the wall, the way that we are having our teachers teach them right now is not the best for an actual education. I'm tired of teaching children to pass tests. I know that it's our only way that we can judge where they are and kind of get an idea of how they're developing. But I feel like sometimes they're, they're missing the big picture for the sake of, of getting those test scores up. So I, I don't even know how you would do that with funding. And again, this is just completely off the wall, but, but I wish we could focus more on actually teaching them how to think, how to learn versus just a structured what to think, this is what you have to do with this test. And I don't think that money has anything to do with that. I think that's a teaching style. And I know that we have to have a, a matrix to judge where they are and, and if they're learning, but I think if we're just teaching them strictly to pass tests, I don't, I don't feel that's real learning. And I think that there's probably, and that's not on the teachers. I'm not saying that this is a teaching problem. I'm saying that this is an administrative problem. That perhaps how we're judging isn't the right word, but perhaps how we're marking how they're learning is flawed.
I, I agree. I don't know that we can really get more resources as far as material things go, uh, compared to what we're getting right now. But one thing I would say is that we need to, I think, broaden our scope of where our kids are gonna go and get more understanding. We're not just gonna have kids going to college, that there are gonna be a broad range of careers that they're gonna get involved with. And try to maybe, uh, expand the connections they can have with those, those non-college bound students. That are gonna enter into, you know, a workforce possibly within right after high school or within one or two years. And we do have a connection right now with Kirkwood Community College. And students being able to get dual credit, high school and college credit for some of that. But I think that's something we could look at with partnering with more people outside of the district or more connections that students can have to explore other opportunities that they're have.
This next question will start with Kim. If there is a growing need, are you in favor of the CPU district adding another school in our Vanna? If so, how do you think we could move forward with that project and what steps would you take? If you are not in favor, what?
I will revert back to my statement before declining enrollment. Unfortunately, we're dealing with declining enrollment right now and we do have, um, facilities that are appropriate for our student body right now. However, with that being said, I think that we need to, our middle school, do all in heart. I think that they've probably given our middle school ten to fifteen years of life left. So we are going to be looking at this in the future. So I, I think, I, yeah, I absolutely would be in favor. I, I'm not ruling anything out. I'm not saying, yep, it should go in our Vanna or hope it shouldn't go in our Vanna, but I think we need to look at our resources of where do we have land? Where can we get land? Where do we have that opportunity to grow? Where, where is it gonna, where is it gonna make the most financial sense? Is it in our Vanna? Is it in Cent standpoint? Fortunately, we have two different counties that we're working with there. So I, I think that's a very deep question. Um, I don't, I wouldn't rule out absolutely no, because I, I do think that we're a dual district of two different cities, two different counties. So not everything should be in one, um, one of those sides. So I think it's important to represent our Vanna. But I, I think we need, it would be a much deeper question into what makes the most sense for the district.
I'm truly just gonna say exactly what she said. I mean, you, I don't know what more you can say. Logistically, you would have to the student, I mean, we are gaining more families in our Vanna. Is it equal to Center Point? Does it completely have to be on which district has more bodies in it? Could we build a new middle school here versus try and incent point? Yes to all of those things. And I think once our enroll, our enrollment, uh, goes up enough where we need to look at that possibility, yeah, I would be definitely open to enhance that. I mean, we definitely have the space here.
Nobody can predict the future. You look at what's happened with Clear Creek to Vanna School District and they were our size, you know, twenty-five years ago, they were a one A school and they, they've exploded into a four A school and, uh, much, we grew rapidly and they grew much more rapidly. So I wouldn't rule anything out either. I do agree we need to prioritize probably a middle school, doing something different there. Um, you know, also the middle school is kind of landlocked. So there's another issue with that. But I would not rule out building in our Vanna, but I also would not make any promises. Look at the situation and just see what looks best at that time for the district.
I think we all look at Kim and none of my mind. Um, but, you know, very similar, um, it, it, enrollment comes first, get those numbers up and then it's all, you know, the sky is not the limit. It's beyond that limit. Um, and we are a united community and, um, I think anything is possible, um, at this point, but there are so many questions that would have to be asked before and you could ever be promised a guarantee and.
This next question will start with Christine. What steps should the district take to support students and mental health and emotional wellbeing with high rates of bullying and social media related issues? What, what steps should the district take to support student mental health and emotional wellbeing with high rates of bullying and social media related issues?
Can I only get two minutes of that? I think this, I think that our governor did a really good job in restricting the legislation that we've gone through to take the funds out of the hands of the students. I think that that is the number one thing at this point, um, because it's epidemic and, and we all know that the mental health is struggling and we all know that there's really no way there's really no way to stop this stuff online. Technology has gone faster than what we do with the COVID and all of that have been able to keep up with. I think that we have two really detached counselors right now. I would like to say that, that every student at Center Point feels that they have, have someone that they could go and talk to if they were struggling. I know that for two years we tried to get counselors and, and there's a shortage. There's a shortage everywhere right now and that is because it is an epidemic. I mean, our kids are struggling more than any generation that I have seen. We've all had this in our households, I'm sure. And there are no good quick answers to this. I know that we have resources in place now, two separate companies that we use that are direct access. If there's a crisis that can be there or be available within fifteen minutes. And then continue to follow up with the family. But the fact of the matter is there is not enough resources out there for demand. And so I think that our best way is to just make it more personal. Know your kid, know what your kid is looking at. Know what your kid is reading, know what your kid's friends are reading. And that is some of the parent responsibility because the district cannot do it for every student. As much as I would like to say that we are, we only give them six and a half, seven hours a day and, and the parents have to be at home and they need to be involved in this as well.
Yeah, there, there is a limit.
I tried to go to China.
There's a, there's a limit on what the school can do. Um, you know, as the teacher, you always are looking for warning signs. You're always looking for, for how kids are being treated. So training staff is one thing we've done and to do that, funding has to be increased. The state has to put more money into those kinds of programs instead of eliminating some of the programs that have been out there to try to educate, not just the staff, but students as well. About how, especially students, to try to educate them on how to treat each other with respect and, and look at, look at everybody. It doesn't matter if they seem to be different than you. There's a lot more that you have in common with them. So it's, it's more about being able to treat each other with respect and making sure that the students understand that they need to treat each other with respect. And I think that's the number one issue. And I think that this, it's gotta be more money from the state to start with.
Yeah, a tough topic. Mental health and bullying and how quickly bullying, um, changes and how aggressive it can be, um, and just trying to stay on top of it. Um, I agree, the school has been doing a great job at, um, combating it to the best of their abilities. But I agree, this is also an at-home situation that needs to be addressed. I do want to take the time to say thank you to our counselors for doing the work that they have and will do. I can see it in all ages of my family that they are talking about it. For my four-year-old preschooler who brings home papers and talks about it and, um, third grader and eighth grader, it's constantly being brought up. I believe it is being addressed, um, as fast as it can be. Um, and to, um, to see that continued communication with parents, what teachers are seeing, um, how they're working on it is always, um, very important. But it is one of those things that will be fighting for a long time and as a school for, school system. Um, there's only so much we can do.
As a school board, I think as a school district, we have implemented things. We, we have in-school counselors. We we have contracted with companies to make the quick referrals if there's an emergency. Um, kids can now go to counseling right within the school so they don't have to leave for those appointments to in this school to get that, um, counseling that they need. So I think, I think we are moving in the right direction and doing things to support this. We now have social emotional learning curriculum. That is part of our curriculum. So those are all important steps, but I think, well, can we eliminate social media? I think that's beyond our control. Um, I think we need to lead by example. So I don't know that this is, uh, directly a school board issue, I think, but I think we can all be involved in that. We need to lead by example. We need to talk to each other with respect. We need to um, recognize that there's differences and it, it's such an ugly environment right now politically, but you know, that's what makes our country good is we have differences. We have differences of opinion. Do, does everybody want everybody to think exactly the same way that they do? We don't move forward if that happens. So I, I think we just really, everybody needs to take a look at themselves and are they leading by example? Are they respectful or do they respect other people's opinions even if it might not be their own? And then I just think like Mark said, I think we need to, the teachers are being trained to recognize, but I think we need to do a better job of teaching our students to look out for each other and to, you know, recognize that, that kid's, they're, they're off today. There, something must be going on and how can we, how can we talk to them about that? How can we ask? Like, how can I help? What can I do? What we need for me? So, um,
So we are right at our hour, but we will take one last turnaround, starting with Mark for any final remarks or closing statements if you'd like.
First off, thank you for hosting this, um, to, to the Vanna Lions for hosting this and for all the different issues that you had to work through. This has turned out, I think it's turned out fine. We have a good facility to put this in and and hopefully everybody's gonna be able to access what we've talked about here today. Thanking, I'm just gonna say, is I encourage everybody to get out there and vote, um, November fourth. That's, that's your opportunity to be heard. That's your opportunity for your voice to be heard. You know, if I played a game of would you rather, would you rather win your seat with a hundred people voting or lose your seat with a thousand plus people voting? Well, of course I'd rather win my seat with a thousand plus people voting, but, uh, if I had to choose between those other two, I'd rather lose, but have, have the voter turnout. Because that is more representative of what the district wants. And for sure, that's, that's what I want to see. So please get out there and vote, um, November fourth. Thank you for this opportunity.
I agree. Thank you, Sam, for hosting us here today and allowing the community to ask those questions, get to know us. Um, and also thank you, Tiju, for the past four years. Um, just, the board has made a lot of changes and definitely is going in the right direction. It's very exciting. Um, and it would be an honor to have the opportunity to also be a part of that, um, growth in our community. Uh, but I don't feel like anyone is a wrong choice up here. Everyone has the right interest at the heart of the community. Um, so with that in mind, I agree again. Mark, go out, get out and vote, cause every level of voting matters.
Thank you for hosting. I appreciate the city loving us, um, doing this and, uh, we don't have the changes that needed to happen. So I'm glad that we were able to get this done today. Um, everybody up here, I think, has student and the district's best interest at heart. That's why we're all here. I mean, I think everybody wants, um, what's best there. So I just wanna, my top three priorities is hiring a superintendent who fits our district and community culture. Is driven to make a positive impact on students and faculty, as well as to be a strong and positive leader for all. I wanna continue to have input on financial decisions that align with be fiscally responsible, yet striving for continued improvements in our district. And three, I wanna continue to ensure a high level of education achievement for our students with opportunities for growth. I, I'm not gonna lie, the last four years has not always been easy. There's been challenges. But I'm back and running again because I do believe in our district and I believe that we are going in the right direction and I think our district is doing good things and I wanna continue to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Lyne. This is a great way to just get all the different input about different topics. I love that the community was involved and able to submit questions. And we were able to get our answers out there. I too have not always thought that this has been easy, but here we are running again. And for the most part, when I, when I first ran for school board, I was told it was one hour.
It's not one hour.
Um, but I also feel that it's just really important. I think it's important to represent the people. And I think that, as Molly said, I think we really don't have a wrong choice up here. I don't believe anybody is up here for an altered motive. I think that we all have the district and the children's best interest at heart. So that's a win-win for our community overall. But it's exciting to me. One of the main reasons that I wanted to be on this school board is because I really wanted to push the issue to better our district. I wanted an auditorium badly for my children, which I knew wouldn't be a reality, but maybe someday my grandchildren will be there. I wanted better facilities. I wanted it to be more balanced so that it was not just all sports, 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 but safety first, which Kim had said. We have a lot of big decisions in that. If that was our top priority, but then to do some of the fun stuff that thankfully the community overwhelmingly came behind us, that's important. So that was very exciting. Exciting for me and I would like to continue. Most of the decisions have been made, but getting to implement some of those and the realities to have that come, come true will be very exciting.
Well, I thank you, Ken, for coming this afternoon and sharing your thoughts with us. And I'll carry you into our recording. And I thank you for the audience.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.